Everybody, let's all rise. Commissioner Court's coming to order. Good morning.
Good morning.
Fairly short, Court, but we appreciate Theresa and Jimmy showing up.
Thank you.
And with that, we will start with the invocation. Commissioner approved, followed by the pledge.
For some reason, I just feel nervous about this invocation with so many lawyers in the room.[31.48][31.48](Laughter). But I'll do my best anyway. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for the privilege of having Court and having laws in order. Ask you to bless this Commissioner's Court with wisdom and make good decisions that are full of mercy and full of justice, and that we can do the best thing for the citizens of our county. Father, we thank you for the privilege also because of the people that protect us. All the first responders all over this world, and especially here in Midland County, thank you so much. Bless the sheriff and all of his men and women that work for him, help to make our city and our county a better place to live. Father, we especially thank you for the three this morning that have served so well and so faithfully to our county. And we would ask you special blessings on their future lives, everything that they choose to do. And we thank you for the replacements that you, that we have already found and that will be taking their places. Help them to fill those shoes well and to bless them as well. Father, now, as we go on, we thank you for this time of the year. We're all thinking about your son who was born and is coming back for us. Help us to live in such a way that we would be pleasing to you to do the right things that are written down in your word. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to me, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I guess it's appropriate to start with Merry Christmas. And to be sure everyone knows, after court, there will be some, and yes, we've declared a public good, so we can have some cake and coffee in honor of the three that have chosen to retire today. And that will occur right here in the side room immediately after court. Randy, you were going to say something?
No.
Ah, okay.
I'm anticipating.
You're anticipating. Number three, acknowledge the retirement of Kathy Jennings Brown from the library.
Boo.
Boo.
Boo. It's always sad when you lose the good people, but this one's especially sad because when I was hired as director, Kathy was still the administrative assistant for the library director. And she basically ran the library for a year while I got my feet under me and held my hand and pulled my butt out of many a fire and kept me out of trouble. So she was able to spread her wings, though, and has been running the genealogy department for us, which is a gem, as y'all know, in our, in the library crown. And so she just decided it's time and spend time with grandkids, and I'm very sad to see her go.
Come on, Kathy.
Come on up. Yeah.[218.51][218.51](Applause).
Do you want to make a speech?
Yeah.
Please.
Just a pure secret. Go ahead. This is your time.
Tell us what you're going to do.
I just want to say I've enjoyed my time with the county, and I am looking forward, however, to spending more time with my grandchildren. So thank you all so very much.
Are they here, Kathy?
No. I have some in Lubbock, some in Dallas.
Oh, cool. Thanks for all the time you've given the county and the citizens of the community.
You're very welcome.
Absolutely.
We have a plaque to commemorate this day, but like I said in the prayer, you've led very well and done a very good job, and I hope your replacement can do, fill your shoes the way that they, that you would want them to.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.[267.12][267.12](Applause).
Item four, acknowledge the retirement of Theresa Klingman from the DA's office. And as far as we know, you have granted no clemencies this morning.[282.33][282.33](Laughter).
I am not Obama. I'm not commuting sentences, no.
Well, this is your time to get to say something.
Oh, well, I would like to thank you all, not only for the time that I worked as an assistant for the county, but as the district attorney, you guys have all been so supportive of our office and so helpful and kept us on track. And I really do thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank, this is the hard part, my staff, because they, they're the best and they know it. So enough said, thank you.[324.33][324.33](Applause).
Yeah.
Theresa, I know when you and your competitor ran for judge.
Yes.
And it didn't work out exactly the way you wanted it, but we gained you as our DA.
True.
And I think you would have done excellent in either role. You did do excellent in the role that you were picked for. And if something like that's in your future, I'll be voting for you.[350.12][350.12](Laughter).
That was subtle.
Congratulations.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you.[358.41][358.41](Applause).
And now, number five, which is the hard one for the court. Acknowledge the retirement of Jimmy Smith from Commissioner's Court and blessings to Brenda because she also served all these years. So, Randy?
Do you want to come give yourself a speech?
Time for a speech.
I ought to sit down there and do it.[384.12][384.12](Laughter).
And this time, try to say what you think.
Speak into the microphone, Jimmy. Isn't that right, Jim?
Speak up.
I wrote a little bit so I wouldn't ramble too much here. You know, guys, it doesn't seem that long ago that our first Commissioner's Court meeting and we were in the basement of the old courthouse. And today, to look at where we are today, it's unbelievable. And one of the things that nobody told me when I became a Commissioner is that we were broke and had very little reserves. And we had all these ideas. And I remember Judge Morrow, and he coming up, and we said we were going to do this five-year plan with no money. And somehow, we did it in three, that five-year plan, because one thing this court was when we came on, all of a sudden, it was a unified court with all these people that were wanting to do things for the employees, the elected officials, and serve the public. And we did it together, and it was just a, it's been a fun ride to be able to do that. Our employees were so important, and you guys have been just wonderful to work with, all the electeds. Everybody is just, it's just been fun. And I've got to thank my wife, Brenda, I mean, for all the things that she stood up with me and stood beside me. And boy, there were some things that were going on that were really tough. She always supported me. And you know, when you have somebody like that at your side, it makes the job a lot easier. But it's been a blessing working with everybody. It's exciting to know that when I look back at this, and you know, you reminisce when you start doing, it's been this long, and you start seeing all these things that's gone on. But it's just a great feeling, though, that leaving the county in better shape than it was when we got here. And we can all look at that, and it just takes this unity that I hope will always stay with this court and always stay with this county. Scott, God bless you.[532.12][532.12](Laughter) (Applause).
I also want to say on behalf of the county that a lot of things that got done here, everybody knows how, how much you were involved in them. It won't be forgotten. But there's a lot of things that a Commissioner gets to do behind the scenes that help people on a day-to-day basis. And I know our values program is going to be reflected in all of our county employees' lives. People are looking for ways to do things to help other people, but I know that you've done that an awful lot, and a lot of times without any pats on the back. And so I want to thank you, and your fellow court members want to thank you for your service.
Thank you so much.[575.12][575.12](Applause). Hey, Brenda, Brenda, do you want to say anything from your perspective?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, all right. Well, Jimmy, you left them wanting to leave the room, so.[613.82][613.82](Laughter). Number six, discuss take action on court minutes from December 12, 2016. They're in your packet.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number seven, presentation, receiving presentation from Courtney. Extension. Good morning, Courtney.
Good morning, everyone.
How are you?
I am wonderful this morning.
Good.
So this past year, we continued a couple of programs that we did from the year before, one being the leadership series at the detention center. This year, we had 11 youth participate, and we did something a little different this year and did a goal-setting workshop, one part at the beginning and one part at the end. And for some reason, this program this year seemed to reach the youth much on a deeper level. And it was a wonderful program, and I hope to continue it in the future. And we had great feedback from both the detention center and the probation officers that were working with me on it, Jordan Metter being one of them. And absolutely loved it. It was a, it was a great program, and a couple of those youth that are getting off of probation actually may be coming to help volunteer at the 4-H office. So great program, and I hope to continue in the future. We also did the Midland County, this is the first year that we've done it. We partnered with surrounding counties, but it was the Midland County Livestock Clinic Series. And we took all of the new feeders for the year and some of the old feeders and paired them up. And we also put two clinics on for each species. So there was a beginning and an ending clinic, and we had over 60 youth at the pig clinic at the Horseshoe this past weekend, or December 10th. And great turnout, great clinic, and wonderful program, and I hope to, I hope that we can, you know, continue to do that in the future. And then one thing that Commissioner Smith told me that I needed to do this past year was a hunter's safety course. And we put it on, and we had over 30 youth in participation. So, and a great response from all the kids. They loved it. It was a lot of fun. And Sean Shreves is a hunter's safety education teacher and a shotgun coach for Ector County, but he practices archery with Midland County and shotgun with Midland County. And came forward, called me, and said, "I want to teach a hunter's safety course," not too long after you told me I had to do it. So it was a sign. And I surely appreciate every, every one of you and all of your support of the 4-H program. And we were actually up in numbers this year. So, and we increased our adult volunteers by four, which is saying a lot because everybody kind of sees the work that the adult volunteers put into the, put into the program to help support me, and I'm very grateful for all of them. So thank you very much for y'all's support.
Good. Cool.
Courtney, did you mention emus a while ago?
Emus?
Yeah?
No.
What kind of animals were they?
We did a sheep and goat clinic. We did a swine clinic and a cattle clinic for both steers and heifers.
For some reason, I just thought I heard that word, but I thought maybe Mike and I would be willing to learn how to judge emus in case you.
I'm telling you, I have a 4-H parent that keeps trying to get me to add llamas into the show, and I'm not doing it. But one more thing, one thing that we did, we are doing this year, actually, two more things. We are adding an equine class to the Midland County Livestock Show at the Horseshoe in January. There will be three classes, two showmanship classes and one halter class. And our horse program is actually expanding like crazy. They decided to add some ranch horse practices and plan some shows for the future. And we have new leadership, and I'm very excited about it. And also, in February, we don't have a date set yet, but we will be doing a first responders' breakfast in appreciation for all the first responders. The 4-H program will be putting that on. It'll be a pancake luncheon, actually.
Pancake luncheon.
Yes, not breakfast.[887.12][887.12](Laughter).
Good.
So that is everything that 4-H did this year, and hopefully, we can continue it in the future.
So you're telling us we need to get you something to do, yeah?
Exactly.[899.00][899.00](Laughter).
And livestock show?
Livestock show will be January 11 through the 14th this year, and we will be happy to have Commissioners and Judge Bradford come out and judge the Pee-wee goat show again.
Look forward to it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight, discuss and take action on appointments to the Library Advisory Board. Mr. Schaefer, good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. This year, the Library Advisory Board met for a total of 10 meetings. We had a participation of little over 84%, which was up from last year, which was about 82%. This year, we have two new members coming onto the board that we need your concurrence and to allow them to sit on the board. First is Mr. Sean McDaniel, who is the incoming president of the Library Foundation. And in our bylaws, the Library Foundation president has a seat on the advisory board. The other person will be Ms. Megan L. Buck, who is the Development Director for the Museum of the Southwest. She's also worked in 501(c)(3)'s and for the Midland Reporter Telegram, a very qualified young lady that will be joining us on the board with your approval.
And the ease will be effective January 2017, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the two new appointees?
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Same.
None. You're done. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Number nine, acknowledge continuing education hours for library directors. John?
Judge, Commissioners, pursuant to the minimum standards for accreditation for libraries in Texas, the library directors required to have a minimum of 10 hours of continuing ed, and I got 16.5 for 2016. Just need y'all's acknowledgement so I could submit that the next time we have to do reporting to the state.
Okay.
Motion acknowledged.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Number 10, discuss take action on Midland County Public Library's strategic plan for 2017 through 2019.
Also, one of the requirements for accreditation is we have to have a long-range strategic plan on file with the state library. When I was hired, we had about a year, and then we ended up doing one for 13 through 16, which we did, I'd say we had a pretty good run the last three or four years and hit a lot of those benchmarks. But we've gone back and reassessed. You should have that back up. It's not super lengthy, but be glad to answer any questions. But it is something, again, that needs court approval, so the next time we have to submit to the state, we have that ready to go.
John, who all contributed to the report?
We had a workshop with Mr. Schaefer attended as the Library Advisory Board representative, and then the administrative staff of the library, which was myself, Pat Breschier, the two library managers, Sharon Rowland and Jessica Waller, and then Edward McPherson from Program and Education. We also had input from advisory board, foundation, stakeholders, and then we kind of mashed all that up, worked with the nonprofit management center.
Good job on the, on this. It's real good.
Thank you, sir.
Kind of wish you would have had somewhere where it shows all the collaborations that you guys have done.
I mean, we certainly have that data. It just wasn't something for the, for the plan.
I got you.
But we certainly can give you a one sheet of those kinds of data points.
Be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Is there an action to accept or not accept the strategic plan?
Motion to accept the Midland County Public Library Strategic Plan for 2017, 2019.
Okay, second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Thank you. The next item, discuss take action on resolution opposing record change from clerk's office. I sat in on a conversation with other counties in Austin recently about this topic, and I didn't see the resolution coming out of the meeting, but it was unanimous in the room. Allison, if you'll share with us what, what the proposal is that would dramatically change your office.
Right, so we have e-filing that is mandatory for the civil cases right now, civil and probate cases, in my office and the district clerk's office. And Texas e-file has developed a software called Search Texas, and they have, they are keeping copies of all of our records that are being e-filed to us, and they plan on making them available to the public and charging a fee, which will then, they can get it from them instead of us, so that takes our revenue away from us. So the clerks have all got together and asked their commissioners' courts to sign resolutions in, in order to stop this from happening.
And the other thing that came up from the judges meeting about this is, in discussing it with Office Court Administration, there was no guarantees that counties wouldn't be asked to pay for upgrades and any additional future costs that might be needed to continue this activity. Short sentence, more money to Austin, collect it locally.
Right.
So she is asking for our court to go on record against this. If y'all have equivocations about it and want to look at it, fine, but I'm in full support of you and Ross on this. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Mike?
Yes.
Along that line, who in the state leadership, in your opinion, is favorable to county government and understands it the best?
The one that we have had, this is just my opinion, this is, I'm not speaking for Midland County, I'm speaking for me. The one that we've had extensive conversations about a variety of things has been Speaker Strauss, because his body has a lot of individuals that came from local government. And his experience is very long in what local governments do for the state. So that, far and away. On the other side, in the Senate, our representative, Senator Seliger, and Representative Craddock, particularly Seliger being a former mayor a number of times, he understands it, but he's one of the few in the Senate that does. Thank you.
Garnett down in Houston?
Well, yeah, Robin points out a good, a good point. Randy, to further it in the House, Garnett Coleman, Representative out of Houston, has been chairing government affairs, or county affairs in the House because he knows so much about it. And there are a couple of more like him, one out of the Panhandle, the same thing. They, they spend time with their local governments to understand what they do. So. Okay, item 12, discuss take action on annual statement of delinquent taxes, 2015 tax roll from Midland County. Midland, Texas, Ms. Hood.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice to see you well.
Thank you. It's nice to feel well. Do you have any questions or comments on this statement?
It says we had a delinquency of, that's up just a little bit, which would be in keeping with the economy, right?
Precisely.
About 70.
But I would tell you that even though it is down, or up, whichever way you want to look at it, we are still at 98.94% on the collection rate. And if you add in the penalties and interest on that, we're over 100% on our collection rate, so.
Yeah. How is the public liking paying in one location?
They like it. They like it very well. I get a lot of very, still real, very positive comments on that.
Still hear about it, too, favorably.
Good.
I'd make the motion that we accept the annual statement of delinquent tax of 2015 tax rolls from Midland County.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. 13, discuss take action on summary of all collections for September, October, November 2016. Ms. Hood.
You have all that information before you. There's three of them coming in this time due to me being out sick and due to end of the year, so we're going to just get them, get them all taken care of today. But I'll maintain any questions that you may have.
Okay. Unless the court wishes, we'd consider a motion and a vote on all three of them as a group, unless you, gentlemen, want to single one out.
Motion to acknowledge all three months.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
14, acknowledge continuing education hours for Midland Tax Assessor Collector. Ms. Hood.
As required, I am to receive 20 continuing education hours per year, and as the transcript shows, I had 33 this year, so I met those requirements.
Okay.
Just need an acknowledgement of that.
Motion to acknowledge.
Okay, have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Judge Luck has item 15. He's in court. He said he'd be here right at the end of this, so we'll hold his till he arrives. 16, discuss take action on 2016 JAG grant award in the amount $12,366. Sheriff, good morning.
Good morning. The money has already been deposited with the treasurer. The JAG grant is something that we share with the city, and that's why the, the check is from the city, because they, we combined everything, and based on that, we're going to take that and dispense it to the local entities that we, that the county represents.
All right, any questions?
Motion to accept?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. 17, discuss take action on additional funds for CID fiscal year 2016 salary line. Sheriff.
This is a request from the auditor to try to clean things up, so get some stuff moved around. Whenever Bijon left, we had a balance of $8,899 that was left over whenever he pulled his drag up, and we're asking that that be funded out of contingency salary.
Because you had to pay his, everything we owed him.
Yes, sir. And after, what, 35 years, he had quite a bit coming, so.
Okay. How, what's the amount, Veronica?
The amount of what? I'm sorry.
Salary.
For CID.
Sheriff mentioned it's $8,000.
$8,899 is what we're requesting.
Excuse me, I wrote it down wrong.
And that's a 2016 salary contingency?
Correct.
That is correct.
We have a salary contingency here.
Correct.
Okay.
If it's there, I'd make the motion that we pay the $8,000.
$8,999.
$8,999 out of contingent, out of salary contingency.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. 18, discuss take action, additional funding for detention fiscal year 2016 salary line.
We ran overtime in the jail. We were running, at one time, we had 500 inmates, and then we settled down. We spent a lot on the 480, 490 range, which required additional overtime for people to handle it because of the numbers. With the district attorney's office working very diligently and with the judges, it's down now in the 400 to 420 range, so we're doing a lot better. But the, the overtime ran up pretty high, and we're needing $66,182 to finish that out on the salary line item for detention.
And your balance in the salary contingency is $144,000, Commissioner.
They need a little money.
Sheriff, how much money did you say? It says different here.
$66,182 is what the, what the balance is that we need.
The 144 is just how much is available in salary contingencies here.
You've got, you've got $75,080 is the total for the salary, CID salary line and the detention CID salary line and the detention salary, that would be the total of the two. But sixty-six thousand one eighty-two right now is what we need for, to clear up on the detention salary.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes, thank you.
How much is left in salary contingency after that?
Can we just slide that over to my?
No.
Let me get my calculator out really quick. So, you had a hundred and forty-four thousand.
You got about sixty-something.
Minus the eighty-eight, ninety, minus the sixty-six one eighty-two, sixty-eight thousand nine twenty-eight.
Okay.
Sheriff, I do see that your overtime, on your overtime line, and in total in that, it is two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, that it's in the negative.
The information we got from your office, we showed it, it was sixty, what did I say?
Sixty-six thousand is what you had indicated initially.
Yeah.
And actually, it's about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the hole when you look at the burden numbers.
Come on, Madam Auditor, how much total overtime do we have in the jail this year?
Total overtime? It is seven hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars.
That includes what we're talking about today?
Yes, sir.
Does not include the burden?
Does not include the burden, so with the burden, it is two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, and there's about a hundred and ten thousand dollars that it's in the, some of the burden, which can be covered by some of the positive numbers, but in total, that, the detention budget needs to be replenished by about three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars.
Okay, but the total overtime in the jail, including burden, is about a million bucks. Is that correct?
I'd have to add it all together, but yes, it's seven hundred and fifty-four.
Yeah, if you'd add that and give us a total, because we, we've got different numbers than what we're, we're hearing, so, I mean, we're more in line with the number you're giving us than what the sheriff was.
We need to come back and supplement that again, see where else in the 2016 budget we might find.
As court was going on, I was kind of looking at the different lines that might be available. I know for the 2016 year, you had about six thousand two hundred left in contingency, ten thousand one hundred left in the miscellaneous line. You do have, in your capital projects, there was a million three hundred available there that wasn't used up, so that's, that's what you have available to pull from, to be able to make this whole, so that I can present these numbers to our auditors to clean this up for our financial statements.
We need to wait until January to get a real count, so we can make certain that it's all covered. I mean, we just approved, what, seventy, seventy-one thousand?
The sixty-six plus the eight, yes, sir.
Seventy-five, yeah.
Seventy-five thousand, so, I mean, I'm lost on where we need to be.
And yeah, and what I'm showing in that line is, it's, like I said, it's three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in the negative that we need to find somewhere to replenish that from. I also have some additional bills that are coming that I'll be letting you know about during my bills, having to do with the health care for, and psychiatric evaluations for the jail.
Let me suggest this, if you could add those bills up, so when you come to bills, let's consider the sheriff's request to cover the overtime as a bill.
Okay.
So, we can deal with all the numbers accurately.
Or align item trans, we'll do it during line item transfers.
Yeah, and we'll do that to date, you can have it ready, okay? Is that agreeable?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Sheriff, while you're there, nineteen, discuss, excuse me, so, for the record, Madam Clerk, eighteen will be considered in bills when we get a total for everything heated. Nineteen, discuss take action on out-of-state travel back of Graham, Donald Graham, Mike Atkins to attend safe, a site visit with Caliber Smart Cop software provider Pensacola, Florida, January ninth through twelfth, 2017, and Sheriff, I don't know that you know that Mike just told me, he may not be able to stay for the whole trip.
Sure.
Or he may have to go after you or before you, due to some things that have come up.
Well, I do have two rooms registered under my name at the motel there that's closest to the office, so if you'll get with me on that, let me know when you're going to go and all, we'll juggle that around.
Thanks.
And then...
But, go ahead.
We're, we're flying out on the night, got a schedule to fly out on the night, the three of us, and if you're, if you're wanting to go, we'll give you the information on that, so you can be on the same trip, get the same, we got a vehicle set up, okay?
And for the edification, everybody, the court, the DA, everybody involved with this software thing, this is a site visit where we changed how we're going to look at software, we're going to go see them, where they operate, instead of the salespeople coming here, and the sheriff asked about doing this, and this is the first one.
We've been looking at different softwares, we've had them come in and do, I think, five demonstrations from different companies to let us look at their product and see what we can get into. This particular product, Smart Cop is a, there's four state highway patrol in, I think, Florida, Georgia, Mississippi, and South Carolina, I think, that have this particular software, and they have a lot of, a lot of agencies that are using their software, it's very easy, it's very simple, it's a one unit, it's the records, the jail, the mobile, all of it is in one piece, and it is, it's what we're looking for, to try to get everything on one line. They've already been in touch with us, getting the list of interfaces that we must have, and they're going to design and give us a cost on the total thing, they've given us a preliminary cost on what it will take to run the software. It was impressive as far as the software coming in, at the price that they did, it was very good. The, we've had two or three others that we looked at that were well over a million, a million five hundred thousand that came in, and that, that was a little bit out of line, wasn't what we were looking for, but this one is. And that's why we're doing the site visit, to get a handle on what they've got, make sure that we watch it in operation, and we want to see it from beginning to end. When they book somebody in, where does it go, how does it work, and how can you get it out, and simplify things for the people that are going to be operating it. They have guaranteed us to take an interface with the people that we're asking for, especially the DA's office, the courts if we need to, and be able to assist us in making it a one, go paperless as best we can, and we're going to have two outside companies that we're going to have to interface with, that we're looking at, that they're going to include in their price. One is medical, which we're going to have a demonstration on tomorrow, they're coming in tomorrow morning, so we have a demonstration on that, and then the other is commissary, that they have a company that's going to, that's outstanding, they're in twenty-six other agencies where they're using it, and they do an outstanding job, and they, they're accurate on their account, and it's beneficial to the agency, so those are the things we're going to be focusing on and looking at.
Sheriff, a couple of things, clarify, you said you've had five come in, my understanding is, those five that came in were covered under buying contracts or buy boards and things.
Correct.
So, they're, so they're exempt from having...
And that, this one, this one is also under ACAC, and we're getting an official letter stating that they are, they've already, the company president has told me that they are, but we're going to get confirmation on that.
And the other thing is, we've got to get, he's looking at a number of things, and we've got to get clear of the so-called product we've got, to settle up with that and some other things.
Yes, sir.
So, this is just a first of what may be many discussions. So, anyway, the request is there for out-of-state travel, is there a discussion or a motion?
What do you think, Jimmy? What you do?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Okay, motion and a second, and with the motion and the second, based on the information we got this morning, the understanding is, Mr. Atkins may have a separate travel arrangement.
Right.
Okay. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes, thank you very much, Sheriff.
Thank y'all very much.
Number fifteen, because Judge Luck has arrived, discuss and take action on audit report from Justice of the Beast Precinct one. Judge, good morning.
Good morning, Your Honor. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Basically, I just wanted to come before the court today, did y'all get a copy of my letter? Basically, I just wanted to advise the court, we had asked Ms. Morales and her group to do an audit whenever I first came into office, and that was done. It did show a couple of deficiencies, we believe we worked through all of that except for reconciling one of the accounts. It showed still a deficit of about three thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and with that amount, we believe this has kind of been lagging for some time. Apparently, it's been there prior to the time Ms. Gina Puckett has been with my office, which is about seven or eight years, she believes. Apparently, these figures go back even farther than that, so I don't know exactly when it was last actually formally reconciled. So, I was just here today to advise the court, we're still there with that outstanding balance, I've spoken briefly with Ms. Morales about that matter, and just wanted to come to the court and ask how I should proceed, or what you would request of my office to do, or how we should show that matter as we continue on into the next year.
Okay, Judge, like we run into this previously in another JP's office, you have a recommendation you want to make?
Typically, what we try to do is, try to have a consistent amount that we're off. Well, first of all, we first try to go back and, as far as we possibly can, to try to get all that reconciled. There are, there have been some cases where the information's not all there, or it goes back a long time, and what we've done is, you usually carry that same balance that you're off by three years, that you consistently can say you've reconciled everything, and it's consistently three years, and then we try to put that in the county's coffers. Of course, anyone can come, always come back to ask for their money, and as long as they have the information or any kind of backup, you know, because we don't, we're not really sure who that money belongs to, but we do try to keep that within those accounts for at least three years, and having that, a consistent amount off.
Okay, so you'd agree that we've been floating in those numbers for a couple of years?
We have looked at those accounts, and I think when we've gone out to do audits on that account, we know that it's something further back, and we've made recommendations for them to try to go back and, you know, see what they can do as far as reconciling, and that, you know, that requires some time to do that work, but we do want to make sure that we're at least consistent in the number that we're off.
Okay.
Veronica, what are the usual sources of deposits or withdrawals from the account?
Which account is that?
What generates that, those numbers?
I believe that's the internet account, that has all the different fees that come in, people want to pay those monies over the phone, whatever, as opposed to doing those in person. They have been consistent to some degree, at least for this year that I'm aware of. Ms. Puckett, along with her other duties, has tried to stay on top of that and watch those fees and those figures, and I believe they've pretty much stayed consistent for this part of the year since the audit was done.
And what kind of person, or what kind of withdrawal can somebody request, and for what reason?
Well, what happens is, they withdraw from that internet account and deposit it in the normal JP account once they put it into the system, so if you're not doing that consistently, and if you're not transferring those funds consistently for people who make internet payments, then that's where it usually comes off. So, that's why it's pretty important for them to go back, I know that it's something that, you know, maybe if you, the court wishes to give them some contract labor money or something of the sort, but it's really important to go back, because you don't want a warrant or such issued on anyone that, that has made a payment in that internet account.
Right, right, okay.
Okay. But you think this is, is far back, like, over seven years?
Yes, sir, that's the best impression I have, it has been quite some time prior to Ms. Puckett being there, which is, I think she's been there eight years now, so it, it has been quite some period of time, apparently, that...
Yeah.
Those figures have been kind of dangling there for a while.
I just pay it off and, and zero out the account, so it's...
The court will just allow him to make sure that that is the same reconciling number that, and hasn't changed any.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
If it's consistent, if it, if it moves around, of course, if there's something wrong, there's other issues.
Yes.
But if you can, if that amount is pretty consistent over the last four years, we can just pay it out and zero it, zero it out.
Okay, we can review that, and I'll get back from Ms. Puckett and make sure that's a consistent number, and then advise the court if that's all right.
That'd be great.
All right. Thank you, sir.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Number twenty, discuss and take action on Office 365 upgrade. Mr. Atkins, Mr. Stevenson.
This came up in discussions because of the amount of office products that we've, are using, and confusion that we get into. Go ahead, Justin.
Okay, we've got a little slide for you.
Slide presentation?
That's right. This IT, we do it right.
Will it work?
Let's hit the button. One more button. All right, so, we're talking about Office 365, today, the county hosts our own email in a server, we, the server's pretty current, the software we've tried to use to the max extent of its life, we're still on Exchange 2007, currently we back up all those emails and retain that in our own repositories through Midland County IT. One of the things that we're noticing with Microsoft is that, one other thing, let me just go through the slides, today, also, we do our own open records, and it's, it's quite cumbersome and inefficient, we have to basically just drop a mailbox down and pick through it and find the documents we need, and it works, it's just not the best. Today, we currently purchase one Microsoft license per PC, it's a single use, we can upgrade it, so over the six hundred users we have, we can have people on Office 2007, ten, thirteen. Another thing we're facing today, and the reason we're asking for this, is because now Microsoft's decided that they're going to make 2016 to where it won't work with Exchange 2007. So, they're basically forcing us into a corner, and we've avoided this as long as we can, but we are now having to look at it as an option. Any new products they come out with, any new features, it's not official, but we've also been told that Exchange one of them be an on-premise solution on the next version. So, right now, it's an OpEx model for email in Office, it'll be stored in the government cloud, so it meets all CGS standards, they have five data centers on the US shores, and so it meets all those standards, we can do Office licenses for up to five devices per employee, and the versions will be consistent with every employee, so if we're on 2016, we go to 2017, 2020, everybody will be on the same version, and they'll be on the Pro+ version. This will eliminate our current McAfee antivirus, it also comes with a Microsoft version of antivirus, our current NSPAM will also be eliminated and incorporated into this. There's also some additional security features that we will gain, such as multi-factor authentication, which we've wanted to do and upgrade, and... Multi-factor, and, I draw a blank, but, anyway, there's some other stuff that, that comes with it. One other thing that we will have, is basically all these email boxes will be in the cloud, which nobody understands the cloud, right, but it's in the cloud. They'll give us, as part of this, unlimited storage for each Outlook's, Outlook's user mailbox, so as far as storage and retention, that'll all be on the Microsoft side, we won't have to worry about on our local storage anymore. The, there's some nice features with open records, we can build cases now and pick email boxes, and do searches, and be a lot more efficient in open records requests as far as email goes. The biggest thing about it is, it's something we've tried to avoid, like I said, but we're kind of at that point, we need to upgrade Exchange, and we feel that this is the direction we should move. We budgeted about fifty-one thousand dollars for some upgrades, including spam and Exchange and multi-factor and other things, and then in our capital, we do have the remainders, remaining funds to finish this off for this year. year.
What total?
$167, $150.
That's the next evolution.
If you would have asked us about cloud services two years ago, we would have said no. It's just becoming inevitable, and vendors such as Microsoft are just saying this is what you're going to get. And the biggest problem that we have, too, is there's no competition. So unless we want to go to open source software, which is not the most secure and efficient for the county, we're kind of just, we're stuck in a rut as far as decision making.
How safe is it going to be when it goes to the cloud? Is that...
As far as safe, it's all going to be in their CEGIS cloud, so it's going to be segregated off from any other data other than CEGIS data. Other than public data and CEGIS data.
Right.
The two separate data centers.
Okay, good.
So we understand you, this is a big improvement, costs a lot of money, and you have the money.
Yes. All that for that.
Okay.
Well, the main thing is that it does meet CEGIS standards, and it keeps everyone current on all the software, so you don't have 2007 Outlook and not be able to use it with a current. The other thing is that the server software is going to be not supported. The 2007 server stuff that we've got that runs our email is not going to be supported in the near future. I don't know exactly when they're, you know, they just kind of give you 30 days' notice. So I would think that we should go ahead and do this. So I would make the motion that we move to Office 365.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Thank you. 21, discuss, take action on data center UPS upgrade. That is not United Parcel Service.
Morning.
Morning.
You know, I don't think I've seen a more handsome court ever.
Okay.
I think he's going to ask for more money.
Again? Completely unrelated to our numbers. Better. Okay, guys, get ready.
I would describe this as an unplanned improvement. This is not something we budgeted for. This is somewhere, I would say, between a necessity and a luxury. So it's not something we absolutely have to do, but we wouldn't be here today if we didn't feel like it was necessary. This is kind of an overview of one of the two critical elements in the data center, this one being power. If you'll recall, we've already taken care of cooling. We did that last year. We have an issue today that we'd like to go over and really ultimately let you guys decide if you think it's worth correcting or not. So we have our generator, we have our battery backup system. We have the electricity that comes into the generator that then feeds through the courthouse up the seven stories to the battery backup in our data center. From there, we actually break that out into two independent feeds, or an A side and a B side. Those are then fed into all of our individual racks and ultimately the equipment. We break that out, because anything critical in the data center is going to have two plugs. It's really no different than a television, for instance. You can plug into the wall twice so you don't miss the football game. If one side goes out, you can run on the other side. Today, we can lose one of those sides, and like I said, anything critical is just going to keep on running. Problem we have today is we've kind of been blindsided by this manufacturer, who used to be, in our opinion, probably the leading one, but they're the manufacturer of our battery backup system. We've had two instances where we've had to shut the unit completely down. And if we go back to our diagram here, you can see that the, whenever we have an issue and we have to kill the electricity coming to that battery backup system, ultimately that then kills the electricity coming out of the battery backup system, which means we have no power to all of the racks in the data center. When we've had to do this in the past, the only choice we've had is Dale allows us to roll up his generator down to the street. We then have to lease some very expensive electrical cables, and we have to string those from the street through the building, up the stairwells, ultimately to the data center, and we break those off, and we go onto each rack and unplug the power strips and plug them into this generator. It's at that point the manufacturer can do their work on that battery backup system when everything's done. We kind of do everything in reverse and put everything back to the way it was. What we're proposing is to bring in an additional, kind of a clone of that UPS, although it will be from a different manufacturer, given the trouble we've had with them. We would be tied into electricity in the same way as the original unit, but as you can see, well, then, the two breakoff points, the two distribution points will be fed by two different UPSs. So it adds some additional redundancy there. So at that point, we can actually lose or take a unit out of service and still feed both sides of the data center power. And again, that's on both sides, so we can suddenly lose or have to place into service either unit and still have generator power and battery power from two independent units. Something else we're including as part of this project is a plug that would allow us to plug in Dale's generator or any roll-up generator to the first floor. So back on this diagram, you have the generator there in the bottom left. That's the one that we bring up and string cables for. We would eliminate the need of having to string cables through the building, through the stairwells, and so on, and we can just plug that directly into the first floor. So this would cover us in the event of a primary generator failure, the generator that we have today. If that guy wouldn't start, or we had some extended issue with it, we could roll up Dale's generator and just plug it directly into the building to feed all the equipment laid out here today.
We had a battery backup failure, and when they came in to fix it, we had to cut off the electricity to the battery backup, and that's what prompted this situation, because we had to rent cables and everything to get it back up.
You had to string those cables every time? You have to do that?
Yeah, if you were to shut it down and have, if you have a battery backup problem, then you got to shut it down, bring in the cables. Right?
Yes, if, for instance, right now, so with this battery backup unit, there was a recall on the entire unit, so we had to go through the shutdown process. We went to replace the batteries, which you do in any battery backup, every three to five years. When we did that, there was some sort of short circuit, and it blew out the back of the unit, and we had to run a generator for a weekend because we had no battery power. This would solve that issue. As part of the recall, they relocated the unit. When they installed it, they installed it too close to the wall, and so when they did the recall and pretty much gave us a whole new unit, they scooted it out more to the middle of the room. That required one of these shutdowns. When they got done, maybe no more than two or three days later, we got an alert from the unit, and it's a false positive indicating that one of the output breakers or one of the main feeds coming out of the unit is open, when in fact it's not. And if you walk by the unit, you see this big flashing red screen. In our opinion, it's probably the last thing that is kind of standing between our formal announcements and the general availability of our leasing space, because we are facing an additional shutdown in order to correct that issue ultimately.
And we can't use the main generator for this specific job. That's the big problem. You actually have to bring in a generator specifically for this. We can wire around it, but it's, you know, we're thinking that it would be a better situation if we're going to envision leasing space on our server, then it would be best if we had a dual situation. But we've also...
We've also been real lucky. When they've had to use the backup generator, it's been on a weekend. If, in fact, they had to use it during the week and had to string those cables up the stairwells, the thing that would happen there is, under National Fire Protection Association or NFPA, then our stairwell is eliminated for emergency use. So what he's trying to do with that backup generator is a very good idea.
The other...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this would take some rewiring of the electrical system as well, so that we would have a hookup from the street. It would just be a permanent hookup.
And that's what we've done over at County Barn. We've got it hooked up right now, and we did the simple way over. It's just a different breaker put in there for it, but every time the power goes out, we just start the generator and flip it across, but...
Yeah, we probably need to do it at the annex as well.
Dwayne has talked about doing it over there and a couple of other buildings. But any building we could hook it up to, you just pull up there to hook in.
Yeah, part of the pricing that I've gotten before is now part of this project for this building, to be able to put that Appleton in, to be able to do. I'm still trying to get pricing together on annex and the library also, so that we can just roll up and have external power if we need to.
Okay. Speaking on behalf of the handsome court. You know what we're waiting on? What's the price?
Let me ask you something. Battery backup one, the one you got there, is it going to be okay? I know you're saying, you're going back and forth saying it's been really a problem.
I think now that...
The other one going to end up being our mainstay, and this other one, the backup?
They'll be mirrors of each other. We'll have a redundant battery system. So I think now that we're past the recall, you know, I think we'll be okay. But the beauty of it is, even if we're not, if we have, if it suddenly fails on its own or we have another recall where we have to completely shut down that battery backup system, we can by this design, because we have a completely independent unit that's there.
I think I would add to that to say that the guys that originally installed this from the county and the vendors, got to give them credit, because even the guys that come out to work on this say this shouldn't have ever happened, but we're like, it has. So we were never supposed to have to take this unit out of service like we have, and they keep saying it's, you know, it never should have happened, but we're like, we faced all these different scenarios. That's why we're asking these different questions.
Of course, we, with the, if we have to do it again, it's a hot, they have come out and work on the electrical hot, which is, a lot of people don't like to do that.
And one of the scary...
Our insurance would not like it.
One of the scariest things in IT is going in one of those racks, bringing up that roller generator, and disconnecting that power, because, you know, you've got six-figure equipment, and every time we do it, we're afraid we're going to do something.
If I can, just one quick deal. If we run those cables during that, in that stairwell for a week, we're going to have a problem moving prisoners over there. We can't do it. So we're going to have to coordinate with the court, the judge, or with the judges and the DA's office as far as having prisoners over there. It'll interfere with the security. So just a caution.
Well, actually, Sheriff, we'd also have to shut the courthouse down, because the fire stairwells would be shut down, so...
All right. Tell us what the cost is. You've been dancing around this long enough.
The equipment came in at just under $100,000. We do not have the other piece, which is the labor, the electrical materials. So we're estimating that the entire project will not exceed 250. But we don't have final pricing on the electrical side.
Okay, so you'd like $250,000 authorization?
Yes, sir.
And this is non-budgeted, so this would have to be a transfer out of one of the capital projects. That's where it'd have to come from, unless you've got a better idea, please.
I'm just saying you have contingency of $680,000.
That's a better idea.
Sounds to me like it needs to get done.
Mike, why didn't you dress up?
Pardon me?
Why didn't you dress up, Chris?
I thought about it.
The request is $250,000. The auditor suggested we do it, comes out of contingency.
All right, I'd make the motion that we take the, or allocate $250,000 out of contingency to create this project.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. 22, discuss, take action on going into negotiations, award for RFP 16 MCO 517 Landscape Services. Kristy, good morning.
Good morning, and I didn't have my backup.
Yeah.
We just opened this bid on Friday.
Yes.
Thanks.
I was looking at the back and I thought it doesn't match. Thank you.
The amounts that we received from Aldridge Gardens is also the same amount that they had proposed initially when we had asked just for quotes before we realized we needed to go out for bid.
That's $925 for the courthouse, Culver's $925, Centennial Library's $850.
Yes, that's correct.
That does have a increase in minimum wage or a fuel surcharge if things change.
Yes.
Which I think is okay. I'd make the motion that we accept the bid.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. 23, discuss, take action on going out for RFP for case management software. We had a communication from my office to Judge Lindemuth and Mike Atkins, who are going to head up the court software package hunt again. And the committee is both clerks, DA's office, COBOS representing the JPs, Judge Lindemuth, and Mike Atkins, I believe. We've asked them to go forward, and in an effort to aid their look-see, we're going to RFP for proposals. Same process again, if the court agrees. See something you like, go look at it. You'll see it in action. At least two members of that committee must travel, and it would be up to the court, since that's our restriction, be up to the court to pay for the travel as it comes through. But we're supposed to have all this court software automation by the end of September, but every county that I've talked to said they'll be lucky if they get it by the end of the year, so...
So are you asking them to come to the court before any out-of-state travel is completed? Is that correct?
Yes, yes. Once again, that will be an effort that's proven worthy in the past of seeing it and talking to the people that have it and see how it works and ask your questions. Then if you want to talk to a salesman, okay.
I'd make the motion that we go out for an RFP for case management software.
Okay. Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. 24, discuss, take action on fleet accidents. Dwayne?
Have three of them report this time. Well, actually, two, two in a building. We've got 15473 from Sillen Warrants. Deputy yesterday was backing out of a driveway and misjudged a pole, about $2,000 worth of damage. We're going to try and fix it in-house. The other one was, and that was Unit 15473. The other one's Unit 10004. It's one of our units. Vector Fleet drives it. It was involved in an accident on the 16th. It's going to be an asphalt accident, but it's also involving another vehicle, and we'll contact insurance on that one.
Yeah, and on that one, I was notified immediately by the Vector people, case of making a turn, and we've all experienced it directly into the sun.
Correct, yeah. It's blinding out there.
For a moment, and it occurred at the edge of the parking lot.
Right, yeah. It's very bad out there where it happened, as far as the sun blinding you.
And that is a county vehicle. That's why it's under the county insurance.
Correct. The other one is going to be over at the jail. Correct. The other one is gonna be over at the jail. The roll-up receiving door, this is at least the fifth time that I know of that it's been hit since I've been here. Usually just trucks backing in, out. They grab that door. It happened again on the 16th. We've been minor fixing this thing, patching it up, patching it up along the way, usually four, $5,000 at a time. The proposal came in to totally replace the door this time and get it back in a real good working shape, rather than patching it again. It's gonna be a little less than $10,000.
Dwayne, why does that door endure such banging around when it has clearance?
It's only a 13-foot clearance. Most of the rigs that are going in there are right at 1210 or 133, 134. When you back in there and you got a full load, you'll clear. Once you take the load off, it comes up, and they try and come back out, and it won't clear.
And when you say unload, you're talking about supply?
Right. They're unloading their supplies at the dock. The airbags come back up, springs come back up, and they pull out. They hit it. I would like, if the court would allow, I'd like to maybe look at redesigning that a little bit and see if we can get some more clearance out of it, so that you can get a 13-6 trailer in there. Not sure what it's gonna take, but I'd like to get the blessing to be able to go forth and see what it would take.
So the door is just 13 feet? How tall is the building?
That I don't know. I'm thinking we can get about another foot out of it. We just have to put a support beam in there, but it would keep us from getting it hit constantly. And right now, if it is a taller truck, a 13-6 truck, they're having to block Washington Street off.
Bless you.
Bless you. Just to be able to unload, they're having to block off Washington Street. And then it's more encumbersome to be able to get those pallets off and the product off.
Before we purchase a new garage door, I'd like for us to go ahead and see if it can be extended the way that you had mentioned, that we don't make, you know, that other expense. I mean, because who knows, maybe it's not that much, or it could be. I mean, I don't know.
I don't know yet. It's just something that I'd have to go out there and get people to start looking at it and see.
Is a foot gonna be enough?
14 might get us close. I mean, if we can get it higher than that, I'd like to get it as high as possible. I mean, at least 15. That way, we can have that extra clearance in there.
Right.
But with the way you got the dip coming up off the street, you got the angle going down in there, it's, 13's just not working.
Dwayne, if the court votes for that, and it sounds like we will, please be sure and use a qualified engineer that can sign off, because that door is a weight load on that wall, and I don't know what the parameters are as you move it higher.
Right, right. Yeah, I was gonna get with the architect, whoever built it, and we'll see what we can do.
May I suggest that you use somebody else?
Okay.
I think Sheriff would concur. I'll get with you on some things.
Okay, no problem. I'd just like to alleviate the problem that we keep having on that time.
I think Sheriff and I would agree on this. We would rather have somebody local that would give us a straight shot, rather than somebody that's wanting to build an edifice to themselves.
No problem.
Once you find those numbers out, can you bring them back to us, so that we can start looking at it? But I think it'd be great if we move forward and-
Yeah. Even if it's an extra expense to get it done, I think it's gonna be better in the long run.
Right.
And just, it's constantly getting hit. I'm afraid that one of these times, it's gonna grab the edge of that building and just crack it out.
Right.
So for today's vote, you're asking approval on the rolling stock issues, and then you're gonna go seek this door change and bring that back before we-
Yes, sir.
-get money. Okay? But that understanding, is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
Second.
All right. Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Item 25, take action on oddity personnel memorandum. Mitzi?
There's nothing out of the ordinary today.
Yeah, there is. Yeah, Teresa's leaving, Jimmy's leaving. Ms. Brown has been gracious and sat there, and most disturbing thing is Atkins called us a handsome court.
Motion to acknowledge?
Second.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Donnelly, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you very much. All right. Twenty-six, discuss take action on budget line item transfers. I'm Adam O' Monitor.
On behalf of the Sheriff, I'd like to concur that you look really good today.
Oh, my gosh.
That's scary.
Listen up, Scott. This has never happened.
It's on camera.
Maybe the last time.
So let me go over the normal line item transfers first. The ones for old year. A lot of them have to do with salary. I told you last Commissioners Court what the situation was in regards to that extra week that we had to tag on to this year, so that is a reason for that. There is one that I want to bring to your attention. It is on page six of 14, line item transfer 1-0608. And only because we are asking for $3,000 out of contingency, having to do with covering still some of the SO admin that was missed, Constable Precinct Two and Constable Precinct Four, so we're asking for that out of contingency to cover some of those lines. That's it for old year for new year. I do have two of them to bring to your attention. Page two of 13, line item transfer 2017 1-336. And page four of 13, line item transfer 1-342. Both of them have to do with the shared Commissioners accounts. And that's, one of them is to move money. Description says computer and phone hookups at office. I believe it's for Commissioner Precinct One to do the phone hookups there. And the other one has to do with a laptop for him. So that is why those transfers are requested out of combined Commissioners budget.
Motion to approve all budget line item transfers?
Okay. And sorry, sorry, sorry. I do have one additional one, which is a big one that you guys asked me to look into for the Sheriff's Office. For 2016, in the detention budget, we are in the negative $343,000. But if you take all of the Sheriff's budgets that are given to him, we are only negative $94,000. So if you wish to, allow me to move some of that around, so that we can get that cleared up and get that to the auditors. It's $94,000 that he is needing, plus an additional $112,500. This is kind of a preliminary number. Has to do with psychiatric evaluations and such, that Brussels is working on the contract with Saluda on that. Currently, it was set at $12,500, or that's what they were billing us at. I think that that number should be adjusted. But for the just-in-case, that's what it's currently at, $12,500, which that's for nine months, is $112,500. The other part of that is prescriptions for the whole year. We just received the bill this month, actually last week, and it is billing us for all the prescriptions for the whole year. It is $165,503. Having said that, what he is needing is 300, as I know currently, is $372,003. And you do have some of that money available in your capital projects fund, if you will allow me to make that transfer, along with the other transfers I have before you today.
And a word on the drugs. That's a Saluda component also. And when Russell gets the contract done-
Yeah, this is prescriptions just for the regular jail, not having to do with psychiatric.
Right. But we'll incorporate in there a billing sequence we would like to see, which is every quarter, so we don't get these bam at year-end kind of things. But we did use it, and it worked, so.
How much was the $165,005?
$503 is how much the bill on that is, sir.
Okay, I make the motion that we move the $372,003 out of the capital account-
Okay.
-to the Sheriff's detention and psych evaluations and prescriptions. And-
And the other line of transfers?
And approve the other line of transfers.
Sounds good.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Go ahead and say what you're gonna say.
Well, after y'all, I appreciate that very much, but we're just getting hit with the psychiatric stuff. And that's gonna adjust this year's budget, so just to bring that up to your attention for the end of this coming year, that we're gonna get hit with it again. We need to get, with the contract, we need to have something where we can get paid or pay them, instead of getting hit at the end of the year.
Right. You don't have the budget for it, so you'll probably need extra.
We're gonna try to do a quarterly billing instead of-
Yes, sir. But just to warn you, this is, it was not included in the budget-
Right.
-that we submitted.
We managed to work it out of the budget. The positive is, they carried us for a year.
Yes.
And I'm not sure they even knew they carried us for a year, so we'll get that corrected where we-
Okay, I just wanted to warn you that it's coming at the end of the year.
Reason we recognize you, we thought you were gonna say something about the court.
Don't tell them they're handsome Gary Flitz.
I can't. I mean, I mean, no.
I've said it for you.
It's been said. It's been said.
Okay. Thanks, Sheriff. Have a seat. Anything else, Veronica?
Not on line item transfers.
All right. We had a motion, and we had a second, and we approved it. So item 26, discuss take action on budget line item transfers, we did. I'm reading the wrong line, discuss and take action on bills and wire transfers.
Yes, sir. I do have some exceptions to the bills this morning. Expo displays, I know of last Commissioners Court, I brought you the actual cost of those display cases. Now I'm bringing to you the delivery charge of $3,500, and asking you that you approve that without a purchase order.
And even though that seems high, I believe this is the one where John went down, picked it up, and drove it back.
Well, no, that was about $1,700. This is $3,500, because they ended up shipping it to us, because there were some issues when he went down there.
Is that right, John?
Yes, sir. The case ended up getting damaged, and so they kept it repaired for free, but I wasn't going back out there to get it. So they shifted it cost, so.
Seems like if it's in their possession, that they damaged it.
No.
No. So the rental truck had issue. I had to turn around. When they were moving it from one truck to the other, it got damaged. We take them back to Expo. They kept it repaired.
Okay, so we were involved at some level?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Wire transfers?
I do have some, a couple more fast signs for the library, no PO. Eighty, it was for $111.81. We currently have, explanation says we currently have multiple orders with fast signs, and there was just miscommunication on the PO on this particular one, is what is indicated. I have one for air gas, which having to do with that helium thing, which is kind of, it's $5.78 out of the HR. There was no PO on that. I do have some additional ones, and I'm just needing your help. I do have Constable Precinct Two bills that we need to go ahead and get paid. Permian Presort $3.15. Permian Presort $2.11. And I have a pilot logistics bill for $44.69. If the court will allow me to go ahead and pay for those, since I don't have that approval on that. The other additional bills are having to do with that Saluda. I do have, I was trying to figure out the one item that I didn't have any money for for last year for the prescriptions. That's $165,502.71, if you'll allow me to pay for that. But I also failed to put in, so for the department to approve, and I can still do that after this, but if you'll go ahead and approve for me to pay for the December clinic admin fee of $77,886.38, that way we can get this bill paid for. One last thing, there was one batch, as we were trying to cut checks, that got missed. And it's 23 invoices, and it's all for attorney, court-appointed attorneys, in the amount of $12,250, if you'll allow me to put that in as additional bills to what you currently have. And that is all I have.
Okay. Questions or motions?
Motion to pay all bills and wire transfers?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Twenty-eight, take action on submitted application for permanent Hughes County right-of-way utility line installation, driveway construction, mailbox construction, precinct one. Precinct two.
Seven.
Precinct three.
Five.
Precinct four.
Make a motion to approve all these.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Passes. Russell, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
I'm happy to announce we have no executive session items, but one last item, on behalf of the Commissioners Court, to Kathy, Teresa, and Jimmy, quite a pleasure serving with y'all. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn to the-
Motion to adjourn.
-cake and cookies?
Only if she's lit the-
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thanks, folks. Jimmy?